Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order. And it is 6:35. And I'll do roll call. I think she's coming in. Councilmember Bunker?
Here.
Councilmember Styler?
Here.
Councilmember McClabb?
Here.
Councilmember Clinton?
Here.
And Mayor Pro-Tam Bill?
Here.
And I'm Mayor Glaze. Okay. If you would please stand for the closing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then to the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And then remain standing for the end. Your gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we just are so grateful to be here and to be your humble servants. Lord God, we just pray that you help us to understand the needs of the city. And we thank you for this beautiful country and for Martindale. And we thank you for allowing us to serve. Lord God, just be with us in everything we do and say in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, do we have any public comments? Okay, Mary Bass? Harper?
This is some of the stuff libraries do. It says this is May the 4th. The library and the River Cafe are showing a movie tonight, Star Wars. Did you bring it? We were looking at projector, the screen, the card that connects everything all like three different places. Trying to get all of them together.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Anyway, the Star Wars movie is going to be shown out in the courtyard tonight when it gets dark. And this is due to a grant from St. David's Foundation that allowed us to purchase the movie license to show movies. And our grants are specific. The star, the one from St. David's allows us to do anything that has to do with mental health, outdoors, so on. They also help pay for some of the materials. And it's not used for salaries, it's not used for our daily activities. But anyway, that's what our grants do. Second thing here, AARP Tax Aid was success again. The Tax Aid volunteers prepared a total of 214 returns. Now, these are preliminary statistics, this is not the final. Anyway, the folks over 60 have over 100 returns. The average income of all of these folks was about 40,000, that's rounded off. And average refund, again rounded off, is 1,600. So again, that's 1,600 bucks back to people, the spending in Martindale. Okay, now the summer reading program starts June 3rd and goes through August 5th. This is for both kids and adults. Just keep record of your hours as you read and you might get prize. And the theme this summer, it is all together now. And finally, the Health and Wellness Fair is July 29th from 9 to 1. And maybe rushing out, I'll check on this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May the 4th be with you.
All together now, was the theme? Are there any other public comments? Okay. We will move on to the City Administrator's Report.
Good evening. So, a couple of things to update on hiring activities. So, we are in the process of hiring a planning and zoning intern. We have made a selection and waiting to confirm the job acceptance after the person we made an offer to is currently a master student at UT San Antonio, getting her masters in urban planning and development, and has a bachelor's in urban planning from Texas A&amp;M. So, high-quality candidate, very excited to bring her on board. And once she accepts, I'll release the name. So, if you have any questions on resume, I can gladly share it with you. Same for a code enforcement inspector. We've made a selection and waiting to confirmation of acceptance. That person is a former sheriff's deputy, retired sheriff's deputy, and has years of law enforcement and inspection investigative, I should say, professional experience. And so, that person maintains a full-time job, but they have availability to come here and at least one day a week and nights and weekends to help us out with some code enforcement activities. And maybe there's some potential to go beyond that. So, very excited to bring them on again with the code enforcement inspector. Happy to share their resume and then confirm once we have the job acceptance.
Jared, since you said some availability on nights and weekends, are we going to have code enforcement on nights and weekends?
No, not really. So, the thought process there is maybe having an overlapping schedule to catch people who may be out away from the home during the workday, especially when it comes to time. Our, we want our approach to be education first. And so, we want to make personal contacts with those property owners before issuing citations. And so, part of the nights and weekends might be just to facilitate that education and communication in person as much as possible. So, it wouldn't be, the regular shift hours wouldn't be patrolling at night or inspecting at night or inspecting on Saturdays. But there might be requirements, I would bring them in on those times. To facilitate this conversation. Most part, they'll likely be during a normal workday, maybe starting a little later, ending a little later to try to get that overlap with people who might be out there.
And what was the title of the first position you said?
A planning and zoning intern. And so, the primary duties that that person would be fulfilling is accepting, reviewing, zoning permit, applications, variance requests, subdivision applications for sufficiency of materials that requires part of the packet. And then facilitating the review with city engineer and other city staff and coordinating the notice requirements to neighbors, these papers, and working with our P&amp;Z chair and co-chair or vice chair to get the meeting scheduled. As we know, some of those P&amp;Z applications have a very tight 30-day turnaround. And so, having a person dedicated for that activity, I think, will benefit us so we don't lapse on things like issues like civic corridor applications that get automatically approved if not acted upon. And so.
Kind of doing what Lee was doing.
Yeah, there's parts of what he was doing, for sure. Parts of what he was doing. And then other parts that he was doing will be covered by the code enforcement inspector.
Did you use the same job description as before with both positions?
I believe I shared it with city council back in January timeframe. And that hadn't changed from then. And so, they weren't, these are not the same job descriptions that our prior building official or economic development coordinator were working under. These are, these are totally different from those previous positions. Elements are the same.
I don't remember the one in January.
Okay, I can send it to you. Any other question? Parking?
When will they start?
We request a start date of May 22nd. That coincides with the start of the pay period. Otherwise, that's, sorry, pay period would be next Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the parking contract with Park Mobile, we've signed our piece. We sent it back to them. We just need a kind of signature from them to come, complete the record on our behalf. But we are working with them to try to meet our goals for Memorial Day. I'm not sure if that's going to come to fruition with some of the delays that might happen in signage. But we're working fast to get that implemented as quick as possible. It's still possible. We get the wrong Memorial Day, but false expectations, there's a good chance that I might slip. Hopefully not by too much, but.
Hey, real quick on this, I was reading the signage. Said client will receive one free welcome kit that includes the aluminum signs and our decals stickers necessary to complete the application. Do you know how many signs we'll get or how many they will provide?
This is going to be part of our kickoff meeting. They really have not restricted the number. But likely will, will these, a large sign at the entrance of these park, paid parking zones. And then additional smaller signage within that parking area. But once we have a kickoff meeting and design consultation with them, we'll have a better idea what that will look like. And then, the last item on here is Phase 1 path renovations. So, with that referencing, last summer, we improved the ground cover for vehicle traffic within the Phase 1 river access area to define a parking area and define a single pathway down to the river. With the pending parking contract coming into place, we're looking to expand that parking area, not by a lot, but by a little to accommodate the 25 or so vehicles that we're expecting. Laying down some physical barriers to delineate where the parking area is in the form of old telephone poles laid down on the ground. So, kind of, you know, curb, natural curb. And then extending a second roadway path, gravel path, down to that parking area so that there's multiple entry-exit points from that space on an improved surface. So, that's, that's where we're at with that. That, that will happen very short order. I'd have to confirm what the timeline is, we just.
Working on it right now.
Is he on it right now?
My calls is already started.
Perfect.
It's more than just really a gravel path, it's an actual road.
Yeah, it's an improved, an improved surface for vehicle traffic.
You can still drive on it, but it.
So, no, it's another road in. We're making a whole nother road.
Oh, really?
In, in Phase 1. Well, it's, we're improving an old road.
Improving a goat trail bar.
Yeah.
That's a little tongue-in-cheek. It really is an area in the grass that numerous vehicles had begun using, but created some mud swallows.
Especially when it's wet, you know, males love to go for a win. Hey, real quick, so you're going to establish, when he's doing this project, establish the parking spaces, right? Because that'll be part of it.
So, we are not going to establish parking spaces. We're not going to number lots or paint lines or anything like that. What is, it's going to be as spacious available.
So, how will you determine to kind of organize, we're kind of direct people to park efficiently so they can get more cars in there?
That's something we might want to look at. Maybe we can, we could paint some lines on the gravel.
With stakes or something down, some panes or something.
Um, maybe. Well, we'll see. This is, this, the way I've kind of approached this is, this is a phase, Phase 2 of Phase 1, if you will. So, the Phase 1 was initially improved to some degree last summer. This is a follow-up to that. And then, as we get going with, with the Park Mobile, we're going to have some lessons learned. Known unknowns is, will people know how to park in there? Some others are, are they going to try to park in the grass off of the roadways and really build the lock? And we'll, we'll adjust how we manage that going forward. Try to be flexible to meet the needs of.
Okay. Yeah, it says here, he's installing six telephone poles, which is really good. He's practically just giving us the poles, you know, because he had, he had some around. So, I think that's nice of him to.
Yeah, it was a fixed, it was a fixed price contract, less than $3,000.
Oh, that's reasonable.
But you said something about 25 vehicles?
That was our, when we, when we were talking with, you know, what we want to control demand in some way, to preserve the beachfront, the riverfront. We thought 25 vehicles is probably the maximum that we'd want to accommodate. And so, that's, that's the planning figure we've gone off of to this point.
Think that, right?
It's still a lot.
It'll be a lesson.
It'll still be a lot, for sure. But that's our maximum occupancy.
Do we, do we kind of know what the capacity of Allen Banks is?
Ooh, it's 20, yeah, 25.
We'll have approximately 50 spots.
Okay.
Okay.
Jared, on page 2 of 10 of the service agreement.
The Park Mobile?
Yes.
Yeah.
On the governing law, it says state of Georgia.
Uh, yeah, so this, this is kind of a contract where we accept the terms as they are. There's not a lot of ability to negotiate these terms. Park Mobile is based out of Georgia. And so, they're basically establishing a formal law regarding any contract disputes that would, that would come up.
But it's been proven to be a good resource in New Braunfels. They, they seem to be pleased with it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, they're, they're a company that's been established for quite some time. I've used their, their parking service app for probably five or six years in other, New Braunfels and other locations.
And the user fee is, what page is that? We might as well show that.
Uh, yeah, so, whoops. These are, they're waiving all the setup fees. And so, it'd be 40 cents per transaction. So, or that would be in addition to the rate charged by the city. The rate charged by the city will be $10. So, the park will be $10.40 to the, to the customer.
Oh, the customer pays the additional 40 cents?
Yeah.
Okay.
It operates somewhat like a sales tax, if you will. I mean, it's not a tax.
We just round it off at 9.60. Goes to the city.
We could look at that. We could look at that.
Hey, while we're discussing this, on, on page 9 of 10 on Schedule 2 Services on Demand Parking Service, it says right here, uh, this information, this is the second paragraph. This information can be accessed by using a handheld terminal mobile device or personal digital assistant. Is that, is that some kind of specialized equipment or?
Uh, personal digital assistants have been out of vogue for quite a while. They're kind of a Palm Pilot.
Yeah.
Or maybe a, just an old contract. They might be out there in use.
That's all, just, I was just asking. K.K.A. Siri. I used to have a Palm Pilot back, back in your pager days. All right, that's all, just a solid contract.
Okay, so, moving on. Anyone who wasn't here for the town hall that we had last week? We started out with one view of a shared-use path, which is like a 10-foot wide, 8 to 10 feet wide sidewalk, basically. And we had to come up with where we wanted it to go rather quickly to apply for this grant. And so, we went from the downtown area to Quail Run. But everybody who is here had a lot of really wonderful input. And by the time we left, we had turned it around so that it went down to the bridge. And so, that was, that was pretty exciting. And we'll also go to the post office. So, we'll have a shared-use path from the post office down to the cemetery and then down this way. So, it would go on that side of the street, it would fix.
We're staying on, it's far down on.
The cemetery side. On that side of the street.
And stopping at the cemetery.
No, no, go all the way to the bridge.
From the post office, yeah. Stop at the cemetery. No, it's going to go that way.
Okay.
And there were some really good reasons for going that way. We have more parkland going this way and we're hoping to develop more parkland. And then we can go under the bridge. I mean, we've got a lot to negotiate in the next probably year.
Real quick, I think that map is wrong, Catherine. That, it says Martinville River Park, that's not, that's not accurate. It's farther down. You see what I'm saying?
Oh.
See what it should be down towards the bridge.
Yeah, that's, that's, it is, that property there is a parcel owned by the city.
Yeah, it is.
But yeah, it is not the River Park. River Park would be off, right down.
Right down there.
Because actually, we, it was correct, Barrett, we proposed to have the sidewalk, which is 8 to 10 feet wide, goes all the way to the 1979 bridge. And then there'll be a pathway under the bridge. Then we'll come back up on the other side of that.
Great, I like that, that's cool.
And that way, that way, you know, you can, you can access, you don't have to cross the road.
Not to cross the road at all.
That way, everybody.
Is there anything incorporated for, because there are quite a bit of, a lot of families cross the road right there. I know a lot of people cross the road right there. It might be smart to think about. I mean, eventually, we probably want to have some kind of, some kind of crosswalk.
Yeah, is Tommy in here? Tommy, Tommy was the tech, checking with tech stocks. Tech stocks, very, they're hard.
I know, at one point, we had discussion about that.
Yeah, there is another time and another place. Yeah.
But just wanted to maybe keep that in mind. I also was thinking, how is it going to look right here?
Well, we're going to have to renovate the sidewalks and we'll have to bring them up to code for ADA compliance and everything. It's a grant and we don't have the grant yet.
Yeah.
So, there's still a lot to work out. But the town hall meeting was very exciting.
Yeah.
In helping the community, helping to plan what they wanted for the city of Martindale. So, that was real exciting.
Like with Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, um, just, is it against code to get volunteers to just, it would just be so simple, go take where that yellow line is. That is just such a, it's just a place, it's just so dangerous. There's people of all ages, just look off, step along. It's just prevention is key, you know? Solution-based situation right here. The way, it's just unlevel. And at night, you can't really see that yellow line. So, could volunteers come out here and do it to code? Could be a group of people that could make just like a cattle panel fencing with a wooden top? That would be where someone that had a disability could use it, could use it to.
Hang on to?
Like an arm, arm thing to help them walk. And but at the same time, it, it would protect someone in a wheelchair from rolling off. It just gets really bad. And I know people that are following right there. So, just something that just ran the parameter. The danger part starts from this pole all the way to the cafe. And just four feet, doesn't have to be high, but just something to just keep people from falling right there.
Uh, we'll have to look at that.
I mean, and then, and there's no grant money. I do, I mean, there could be people that could get together and make that happen. And it's not something that the city has to pay for. People could sign waivers that they're not, if they get hurt, it's on them. You know, it's just something that can be done or that can, if y'all know what I'm talking about, don't y'all see that it's being just problematic right there? Or is it just me?
Why don't you present something to the mayor?
Yeah. Maybe we can look at it.
Mind me about it, overthinking it, does anyone else feel like it's just me? That's wrong.
If we do get this grant and we'll be able to, to look at all of those kinds of things and still try and keep the character of the city, you know, the wonderful little horse things that are there and all of that.
Yeah, I don't, if something's on top of that, I don't know what you'd be there. I don't know what you'd be there.
Yeah.
Just something to protect. There's this one little place that, that's right in front of the cafe. Before you get to those, once you get to those rings, you know that it's kind of up.
Yeah.
Right? There's just one little spot there where the steps are, that's dubious.
Okay.
You know, I'll just put something together.
And is it something temporary or you want to do something?
No, just, just something right there. Even if it's, even if it's just something in a beam, right where those steps are, it's just, it's almost an optical illusion that the way the steps are and it's really high. And then, once you get to those little rings, it levels out a little bit and it's easier to navigate. You know what I'm talking about? You know, there's that one step right by where those steps are.
Okay.
Windy, windy, small, right there.
We'll take a look at it.
That's what people, so even if, even if it's just something strategically placed there, it could even be a temporary plant, just something needs to go right there.
To indicate, yeah.
That.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Mayor, so, I mean, just from the discussion and what I'm hearing about the grant. So, it's the, what I'm getting to, and I don't know, like, for sure who the owners are, but are we saying that all the sidewalks are owned by the city of Martindale? That's why we're doing the grants and we're doing all that? Because like, if we're talking about, like, as a city, how we're going to revamp the sidewalks, like, do the sidewalks belong to the city of Martindale? I think we're getting into more detail than we actually know at the moment. Yeah, so, I mean. We're just applying for a grant. We had a town hall meeting to think what they wanted. But I was investigating. I think that's a pretty important part. You know, just as far as like the ownership, like, is it, does the city own the sidewalks? Is it, you know, is it Carlton who owns the sidewalks? Is it, you know, like, where does? Landowner? Yeah, where does the ownership come?
Well, that's what I was about to say, because Mari didn't have the sidewalk out yet on his building. So, it might be, I mean, we're not there.
But yeah.
Once we get there, it'd probably be smarter.
My particular building, I own only a few inches of brick facade. And when I built that sidewalk, that was a requirement when I was working with Lee and with the permit. Part of the requirement was to build that sidewalk out to code. And that was verified by Veritas, which is the same outsourcer. So, I can speak to my personal situation, which is, a lot of times when you want to, you get the landlord to do it in order for the landlord owner to pull the permit for something else they wanted to, and you say, by the way, the sidewalk out there, yeah, it's the city's, but you need to fix it and you need to bring it up to code. And that's just, I mean, Austin does it, every major, every city pretty much does it that.
Yeah.
It's for the public good. And I, I think it's a wonderful idea. And I know that we applied for the grant, but I, I would think that finding ownership of that is like step one. And then.
I believe it's more than just a sidewalk. This is a, this is a shared-use path that could support bicycling and other things.
I was just talking about over here.
That will be part of the engineer designs and we'll have plenty of opportunity to influence what that looks like.
And to answer all of those different kinds of questions.
Planning or, if we even get it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the city accountant.
Go for it, Eric. Hello, how are you all? I, I think I didn't get the cash balance report in, but I have it here. So, I'll just read it verbally. As of today, the city has $97,267 in the general fund and, and another $81,000 in other restricted funds for street use, court, police, utilities such as that. So, a total at First Lockhart Bank of $177,551. The tax pool investment accounts hold $704,405 with a total cash on hand of $882,081 right now.
How much is in the hotel tax restricted fund right now?
$45,718.
Okay, thank you.
And I think I have some on my desk to put in there, so. About that much. The amount due to comptroller for excess fines of the past is $292,967. Now, if we can make that a little bigger, this is the general fund budget report October through March. So, this is halfway through the year. Go over a little bit so we can see our percentages on the far right column. It's kind of not going to fit, is it? There we go. So, you see the, the main source of revenue, the property tax revenue, $351,000 collected in the bank through March, 90% to 60% collections. And that money continues to come in to the 10, you know, $5 to $10,000 a month. So, that. So that should all be collected as expected. Um, you notice the uh. Items that are over fifty percent for the half of the year are um permits. Are strong, sales tax revenue, strong. And look at that, look at investment interest. With the, with the new interest rates, um, that number's huge uh compared to the past. Uh, the next section is uh personnel. You can see the total personnel expenses. They're at two hundred and sixteen thousand seven ninety four or forty six point eight percent of budget. So that's uh within budget as well. The other operating expense lines total thirty nine thousand thirty nine dollars. At forty five percent of the of budget. So that is uh, that is in line. And then. Other contracted services, you see seventy seven four eighty seven, forty six percent. So all of the uh major categories of the budget appear to be in in order. Uh, or within budget. The uh next report. Shows expenditures for the month um to various people. Mainly contractors who do things like mowing that you see there. Uh, several of the first ones there handled the mowing. Been a lot of that this spring. Um, now we're on to the utilities budget report. And you see a hundred and sixty six thousand five sixty three through half the year, fifty one and a half percent. So that is uh on plan, expenses, same fifty percent of budget. That's all looking good. Um, there was a pretty big check today. Uh, that'll, might tip that over budget. For, I forget, some kind of material for use out at the uh irrigation ponds. So uh, if you go on down to the bottom, you see we've brought in three thousand nine hundred and ninety six dollars more than we've spent. Uh, through the first half of the year in the utility fund. Uh, there's. Benders we've done in there. Community Development Fund, that's where the grant funds uh go in through uh March. We uh brought in two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars worth of grant funds. And spent a hundred and sixteen six seventy seven, or excuse me, a hundred and sixty three with the two, two categories. Uh, that money, when, that once we look at it in April, that money's all been spent. Um, there's just some timing at the end of uh, end of March. Uh, and then the last one is the special revenue fund. Uh, you see, we've brought in twenty five thousand six hundred and twelve dollars of special revenues. Fifty percent of budget. That looks, you know, like that's all, some of the items are significantly ahead of plan. You can see, and we've spent very little of it, uh just some tech, tech expenses here today. So uh, I believe that's all of the reports uh through the month of March. So uh, everything continues to move along.
Now, we're doing fun, you mind?
Yeah.
Which fund was the one that was supposed to go to infrastructure?
That's that one called Community Development. It's the third one. There you go.
The contract?
Going to be PDF page twenty five. So this, this is the Northwest River Road project primarily, so. As Dwayne was alluded to, if the city becomes a pass through. We, we don't really retain money for v- for very long in that account.
Yeah, the grant people see to that.
We get it and within three days, we have to disperse it.
Yes, yeah.
Are there any other large outstanding liabilities the city has? And so every other liability we have, financials is covered in these financials.
Uh, these, these aren't full, full statements, like we don't have like depreciation of assets and other things.
Sure. But as far as liabilities, yeah, we don't have any liabilities. We don't have lease liabilities on police cars like a lot of cities.
So, I mean, I'm looking at this and this is such a better financial position than I had been led to believe before coming in here. If we've got seven hundred and four thousand in your investment. And call it three hundred for a round number. You, you said seven oh four in, in our investment accounts?
Yep.
And we got, even call it three hundred for easy math, do the state comptroller, that's a net of four hundred K. And the comptroller's not, you've got time to pay that out, right? The comptroller isn't due all at once.
So it's.
Interest free.
So the city is solid.
Oh, very. Better than. Oh, very. There's, there's times when the cash balances are over a million dollars.
Better than the US government.
Some of the seven hundred and four is in restricted accounts um being held. So it's, in terms of general fund type of general use of the funds, it's probably more like six forty, six fifty. So, but yeah.
I mean, y'all, you're, you're, you're in solid shape.
Keep it going.
Yes. Good job.
Good luck at that place.
Well, just, just real quick, so twenty percent of our sales tax pays the uh state comptroller monthly, right?
I think that's, I think that's the right number, yes.
Twenty percent of the sales tax.
Twenty percent of the sales taxes automatically.
Netted.
To the comptroller and not given to us. It's not like we pay it. They take it out before they give us the money.
Our state.
Okay. Twenty percent, so it's roughly, I think it was seventeen hundred dollars a month or something.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to the wastewater management operator.
I'm gonna start with the, the influence. I guess the pumpage to the plant, uh, we pumped about a million fifty five thousand five hundred and seventy gallons. And we averaged about thirty seven thousand six hundred and ninety six gallons uh per day. And uh, we maxed at a hundred and thirty three thousand eight hundred and seventy five gallons. And uh, the minimum was a fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty gallons.
That, that, that seems a little higher. Nor was that through the storms.
Probably, yeah, cause we, we got that out. Yeah, cause we had infiltration of this.
Yeah.
I, I know you had gone down to Tree Lane and Cemetery Lane with Sean McDonald. And you looked at the open cleanouts over there and you came up with a bit because you said when it, when it raining. The water is going into those cleanouts.
But we're at a.
Cemetery Road.
Oh, yeah.
Tree, Tree Lane. Broken sewer lines there.
There, there's a, there's a big issue there that uh, that gets me, that's where we get a lot of info.
And you gave us, you presented a, a monetary amount that it would cost to fix it or did you just talk about? If, if you could give, give us a bit on, on that, because I know it didn't mention that we have a lot of infiltration into the sewer treatment. Plant during the storm and it appears that a majority of the water could be coming into that old sewer line there.
That's true.
Okay.
Is that the one that, that there's only one line and there's supposed to be two or two?
There's two, uh, we've got two mains, one's coming uh north and south and then east and west. By Mike's pit.
I thought one of them was defunct.
What happened, Jan, there was, you know, when they, when we had that flood in ninety eight? They, they, they sold all that land to the female, you know, when they bought out that, all that land by female and stuff. And uh, the contractor, they, they messed up all the services down there. They didn't pay attention to cap the lines and all got crushed.
Oh.
Um, there, we gotta find those things. I talked to Sean briefly the other day when we did that, this work up here at Skyview. And uh, we came up with a plan. I just gotta, we just gotta sit down and talk about it.
I'd like, like to fix that, yeah.
And if uh, if y'all can be helpful too, we all see any in town that are broken, because I know people sometimes they run them over with a lawnmower and stuff. Everybody get loaded with, everybody, uh, we pay the price of.
What, what are they running over the?
The cleanouts in the yard.
Oh, right, right, right.
And people don't say anything, you know, they just, and when it rains it pours.
I feel like I just saw one that was messed up. I'll let you know.
You can let the mayor know too, you can get the address and all that.
Yeah.
It's uh, when we had this little co-founder that came in the other day, we uh, we got three high level loans from all three stations.
Oh, man.
That tells you a lot.
And that, that's those white.
Yes, ma'am.
That type of infiltration kills our uh capacity to.
Talked about in previous.
And uh, any questions on the public report? And uh, I've been, since we're talking about a little bit about the plant, uh, I've been working with Thomas Turk on the, he, he got a page together. I think he talked to you there, I think, on, on things that we need to tackle.
Yeah.
And uh, that's why I'm gonna mention a lot about, about the designs of one, two, three, because a lot of those things are already gonna get done. They've been pending for a while, so.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah, we're making a little bit of progress on it, so.
Yeah, so uh, we've had, we had a kickoff meeting a few months ago with our engineer. Um, and their subcontracted engineer, uh, electrical engineer. They took a field trip with E, kinda looked at the, the systems. We plan to use some of those federal funds that we received to address a lot of the, the issues in our. Lift stations and electrical systems and um trying to figure out where our priority is, where our cut line is. At the same time, we started working on a, a grant um to. And we've, we've recently shifted focus, a Texas uh Department of Agriculture grant. That would allow us to go in and perform even more maintenance on the lift stations. And we're looking at also increasing the capacity at our existing wastewater treatment plant. Um, through um improved irrigation systems and, and other things. So we're. As we wanted to see how that shook out, to know what pot of money we want to use where and what the priority was. We haven't moved forward yet, but we're, we're actively working on, on figuring out what those priorities are and getting towards the solutions.
Yeah, I'd like to see something come across our table. I know we approved for the spending of the money for the lift station.
Yeah.
We're kind of getting into next month's report, but Pete has been cleaning out the lift station.
It's been a long time coming yet. It's been about two, three years.
For April's report.
We haven't gotten to figuring out what the capacity is.
Yeah, I think we've been talking about it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but uh, just to, I guess to get into that area, we uh, we pumped them down. I sent some photos to y'all. I'm just saying, you have enough, enough time to put it in a flash drive and maybe the next day. It had about, maybe about two or three feet of slurry grit. And it was already invading the, the pump, you know, that's not good for the pump.
Not good at all.
Yeah, so I'm glad that y'all acted on that, that saved, saved a lot of money.
We don't wanna burn those pumps.
No, we don't.
Didn't even ask what those cost.
Yeah, and uh, the plant, what I used to do in the past, I used to uh clean all sewer lines first. And dump it into the lift stations. Pump stations out, because uh, we put all the trash in. This time we did the opposite because we're that, that uh, that uh, they're real dirty. And uh, you know, it's hindering our operations. So I had to make that choice and do that first. But next time we, we need to clean the, the wastewater lines, because I've opened some manholes, they're pretty, they're pretty rough. So I'll have to get, I have to get y'all the price, yeah, one thing at a time.
Sounds like a lot of work, man.
It is, yeah.
Maybe we just create more infiltration opportunities and out flush it down for us.
Yeah. And uh, but I'll, I'll get a price on that on sewer lines to clean up. That's part of maintenance of the system. You have to keep it over there. It's like your car. And uh, also, uh, we, we did have some activities to. We uh, I think uh, for the mayor, she, she talked about some sewer taps, possible sewer taps. One at Mr. Laura's uh property and then uh, Taco Bell's there.
So Landzow is coming down.
And, yeah, and all the ones for eleven.
Yeah, I guess some contractor is going to look at that. That's, that's a big, that's a big deal there.
Yes, it's a big, long taps there.
Yeah, we're just trying to see how we're gonna feel concerned about the street. Figure a simpler way.
We won't have a street left after we do all those taps.
Maybe a common line or something like that, one big pad or something like that, accommodate all of it. You know, something, I'm not an engineer, but uh, it's just the years experience that I've had, you know. That's, that's what a lot of farmers do, like in San Marcos and stuff, they, they make maybe a ten inch, nine inches or. Yeah, instead of cutting the hole, beating up the whole road.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Is that line in pretty good shape up out there, that sewer line?
It's, I think, it really hasn't been in the ground that long.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Yes, I think it was put back in uh, two thousand and seven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Brand new.
When they built that thing, that, they, they installed that sewer line there, they, they made, they gave it enough capacity, at least like ten inch, ten inch made. For future use, you know, so to carry Skyview and those.
Cool, so uh, it's uh, right.
Yeah. Yeah, and then uh, that's about it. I mean, I saw like, really on the, just still the, and that, did, like I said, we did clean the, the lift stations and stuff. Just gotta make a schedule for next year.
Keep on it.
Yeah, stay on topic. And a lot of it wasn't everybody's fault because uh, we jumped into pandemic mode, you know, and stuff. And it was hard to get people even across the road to become like clean, clean stuff, because everybody was afraid of the coronavirus. And the sewer, you know, and stuff.
Yeah.
It was a big deal.
Is it, it's necessary to do every year? We should just have a scheduled clean per year, like this is the day.
So I was telling the mayor that uh, maybe this coming, this coming budget coming, uh, when y'all discuss the budget, I'd like to sit down and.
Put that in the budget. That's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
Reminded about.
Yeah, but uh, other than that, it's all I got. I mean, like, it seemed like you're all making pretty good progress on the, on the sewer system. With Tom up in our comment, Jared.
That's great.
But uh, yeah, just keep going forward.
All right, thank you, Pete. Thank you. I made a note of it.
Yearly.
Yearly cleanout, yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to new business, three point one. Um, a resolution of the city approving the submission of a detailed application. Based to, to the Texas Department of Transportation for a transportation alternative. Project, also appointing a signatory and a match. And so this is of what Jared was talking about earlier, where uh, we're applying for a grant. To um, extend our treatment plant. I don't know how much. I haven't talked to Thomas Turk. Can you speak to that?
To, to the greatest capacity that we can, that we can do.
Yeah.
With, within the lim, within the.
Alright, good.
Physical limitations of the space, given the flood and drainage issues and other things. But to the greatest extent that we can, is really his marching order. Then he'll, once we get the grant, he'll, he'll get in, fine tune what that ends up actually being, but.
So this resolution is mainly, it's one of those things you have to do to get the grant. And it's just appointing uh people who would sign. For, you know, all the legal documents for the grant. So I would, um, I would imagine that it would be myself and Dwayne.
Yeah.
To sign for it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm restricted from signing um representations to the federal government as a federal employee.
So it doesn't need, this resolution doesn't need to be passed by council?
Yes, it does. We need a motion in a second.
I have a question about. If we do end up. Getting ano- another wastewater plant, at the, other than retention fund, will we be able to use both?
Potentially.
Is that what, is that what our plan, our, our future vision is?
Well, i- i- if the city goes out for a subsequent grant. Um, to get a new treatment plant, it'll be several, several years before it's up and operational. And so, and so um, this, this grant is kind of a bridge effort to get us to that future.
Okay.
So. And then what that future ends up being is will be in the contours or like grant design.
So I'm going to make a motion to appoint our mayor Catherine Glaze and our Dwayne Anderson as signatures. And I'm going to make a motion to pass a resolution of the city approving the submission of the detailed application based to, to the Texas Department of Transportation for a transportation alternative project. And then I've already assigned all those signatures.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, moving on to the next item is a motion to direct city staff to draft a resolution recognizing and supporting the creation of Visit, Visit Martindale. But before we get into that, we have Mari that has a little presentation. We've been talking to him about taking over the motel, hotel tax and creating a tourist bureau that would handle that money for the city.
Yeah, so Craig Foster and I have been meeting and discussing for, I'd say, since the first of the year about ways that we could put together a branding and a marketing program to promote tourism to Martindale specifically encouraging overnight stays for the people who pay the hotel motel tax. That organization would be called visitmartindale.org. We, we have that URL. Onto the next slide, thanks. So promote tourism, in, in particular, build a branding program with awareness campaigns. Both of us have a background in digital marketing. I know Craig worked in digital marketing for a long time. I actually ran a digital marketing firm in San Francisco for quite a long time before I came to Martindale. So we understand the space really well. We know how to build campaigns and stuff out of it. I'm sure as you guys are all aware, the great benefit of online marketing is it's measurable. You know exactly how many people clicked on an ad, you know what they did after they clicked on it. Generally, you can relate that back to actions they take such as booking something or, or downloading a brochure about the city or something. So it's, it's highly trackable and measurable. And then we want to stay in constant consultation with the city and with council through periodic reports. So we would put together a plan, a budget, and quarterly come back and report on how we had spent the monies that had been planned and budgeted and approved and what results we generated from them. So again, on the programs, branding assets and a communication system, or you can skip that slide. That's just saying we would form a nonprofit is required to do that. So on the branding assets, a logo, you know, fonts, imagery, a slogan, calls to action, you know, all part of a branding system that we would use when we advertise. Signage on Highway 80, you know, probably the number one asset we've got.
We talked about that in the past.
Yeah, you know, we have, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of people literally driving by on a monthly basis. When they do that, they're not only in Martindale, but they're five minutes from downtown. But, you know, I'm sure 90% of them aren't even aware of, of what's here and the fact that we've got merchants.
We talked about maybe a nice wooden sign, have something you can clip on like Chili Cook Off or Water Safari or something you can, special event you could just.
Absolutely. Yeah, and before, I mean, obviously that would be a, a sign that we would define and get a budget for it. We have the location for it. We could tell you the size of it and all that kind of stuff.
Now, wait a minute. I thought you could use the hotel motel tax for welcome sign.
You can to promote tourism, so, so you have to be specific in the language that you use on the sign itself. And as long as you are promoting Visit Martindale, as long as you are promoting things that relate directly to people visiting or staying in Martindale, then and when I read through that guideline, that sort of thing I believe is allowed. Just like advertising is allowed in order to promote tourism. It's really just static advertising and not online.
All right, that's just for the treasure, Dwayne. Do you know anything about that or? I, I worry about that.
About the sign?
Yes.
Encourages heads and beds.
That's the, the number one test is heads and beds. And so as long as it's directly related to people spending money to stay overnight in Martindale, then it's, I believe, absolutely consistent with what I've read about them, ways you can spend the hotel.
Others, other cities, other cities have taken a similar approach to the use of their hotel tax funds. And by basically issuing them as grants per an application. And so, visitmartindale.org and it would spend a budget that would be reviewed for sufficiency and compliance against the statute. And then they would be given that grant of funds to go off and execute accordingly. That's, that's a fairly.
They will get permission from the government, right?
Yeah, there, everything that they'll do would have been documented.
Right, okay.
And it's going to be through the nonprofit?
Yeah. My hope would be that as we leverage a nonprofit to the greatest extent possible, whatever that looks like, well, that will reveal itself as we go along, but to the greatest extent possible, you know, events, advertising, the gamut. But we'll have to see how it goes once.
There are many other cities that have taken this approach where a nonprofit forms by emergence association and then puts together plans, budgets, and then gets approval and gets funding and then reports back. It's a, it's a known, it's a known process, the way people do it. The, the other choice would be for the city to either hire or, or do it themselves. And I, and, and speaking with, with management of the city, the preference has been to, to form this organization with oversight by the city. He's supposed to have the city invest the funds directly.
Can I, I hate to do this to you, you know what I'm gonna say? I'd like that. I would like, I would like to add something to your possible creation of this program. I've, I've, I was attempting to organize a grant committee or something to expand our parks. And I don't know if y'all be willing to actually take on that task to assist in finding grants with the county, with the city, because it's all about tourism and the more park land we can acquire down here, the more people will come. So I don't know if you want to take on that.
I, I'd love to do it like in a phase two or three. In this first time, I would just love to focus on getting the organization formed, getting them, getting merchants to join it. Getting a plan put together, getting it in front of the city council and, and the city, getting that approved and then, and get the branding campaign. Then we've got a lot of stuff to do, but I'm super happy to help with that.
Like phase two, we'll go with phase two.
So I can give you an example of how this does work. So my husband and I had a bicycle racing business. And we would go to tourist boroughs and get money, like two or $3,000 from each city because we were usually having a three day race. And we were bringing a lot of bicycle racers into the city to, to use their roads and everything.
Stay locally if it was going to be a three day race.
And we always got the money.
Makes sense.
I had a question about the signage on 80, the signs that we currently have there, not we as the city, but there's one from the church. Jack Mudd had one on his property. All the signs are on private property and not in the east of Tex- dot. So will these signs be in the east of Tex- dot or you don't know yet how this.
We don't know yet. I know Craig's done a lot of research and has found some programs that are available through the state that would allow us to put some signs. They are specifically defined. They talk about going to city centers or city downtowns or sort of, that sort of thing. They cost some money, but they were pretty cost effective. It was thousands of dollars, not tens of thousands of dollars. And then we have also been, once, if, if we get this approved, if, if the city council likes this approach and we put together a program and a budget, then we would also approach private owners in order to look at where we would want to have a sign.
On private property?
Yes.
You, you could say in those fields or whatever.
Absolutely, you could.
You, you've been up the northeast, you know, they're a little ahead of us sometimes in Texas. We got big, huge billboard, which are ugly. And they have little quaint little signs, you know, here's, here's the scenic, you know, downtown, you know, instead of having some huge Don's Fish Camp billboard, you know. They got a little sign that's artistic, you know.
So, so, yeah, and, and.
Not to be specific.
I think that's really, I think that's really important. The plan, the plan would be brought before council. And so before we would spend any money, we would define the location, we would define the sign type, we would, we would show you what it would say. And then that would be approved. And then we would get the money from the city and then we would execute on it. And then we'd come back and we would say, here's what we spent and there's the sign.
Maybe this is a good opportunity to kind of talk about the sequence of events in those programs. You know, the physical installation of sign probably is not the first thing that's done. I would imagine it's probably look more at the branding strategies.
So it's, it's pretty close to that, right? Yeah, the first thing to do would be to develop the visit dot, the visit, the visit Martindale branding system, which be logos, fonts, pictures, slogans, call to actions, all that sort of thing. From that branding system, you can develop a signage, you can develop advertising, all of, all of the, the promotional activities. The website, which is, you know, the next thing after the, the signage, all of those things get developed based upon the branding. And again, we would come to y'all with the branding and say, here's the branding, here's the logo, all of that kind of stuff. So we, because the money's coming from the city and the hotel motel tax, we want to make sure that all of our plans, budgets are reviewed and that city council and city management is fully aware of what our plans are and how we're going to execute.
Can you elaborate, oh, sorry. Elaborate slightly on building a staff of visitor center on Main Street?
Sure. Can I, let me work through the other two and then, and then I'll get there. So develop the branding system, use that to develop signing on Highway 80, use that to create a website, which would be a destination, destination marketing website. So in advertising, those would have what are called landing pages, so that when somebody clicks on an ad, it would go back to a page on this site. That site would also have all of our merchants listed. It would have the places people would stay, either links to the RBO. But there would be pictures of all of the places that people could stay. If they click on it, it would go to whatever platform those people have their property listed on, so the people could, could, could book it. The advertising campaign on social media, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube. And then all of that with, so honestly, with a, with, even if we had every dollar that's in the plan right now, the 45K, right? That's gonna, we would, we would put together a budget, but my guess is, is we're not going to have a ton left over. The other thing would be really important to understand is at what rate do we generate, do we replenish the funds? So we could get a sense of what our ongoing runway rate would be for, for budgeting and future, future stuff. So if all we did was get these four things done and contend, and perhaps leave some money aside for events and things, because I know we've got Fourth of July, we have some other things that, that we have been using to fund from this hotel motel tax. If we only did those four things plus some of the events, that's a huge success in my mind, right? To have gotten a brand out, to have gotten awareness out about Martindale, Martindale. You know, we would, we would initially focus on the Austin to San Antonio corridor. And then later, if we felt like we'd done a good job there, we would go to Dallas and to, into Houston. But if we, if that's all we did, then that's a big success and a successful use, an outcome, I believe, from the hotel motel tax. If we find that maintaining that campaign, maintaining the events that we're choosing to, to sponsor, we have money left over, then we would look for a place that we could staff a visitor center. It might only be on the weekends. Again, I don't, I don't know Monday through Friday, there'd be a lot of people. But at least Saturdays and Sundays, it would be really great to have a place where there's brochures, where there could be somebody who would be there to talk about the merchants, the places to stay. People would probably want to know about the parks and water access. I mean, all of those things would be really nice and it'd be great to have that on there.
The non-disposable container swag.
Are you also going to work on incorporating the Airbnbs that are not currently paying the tax? Or are you just going to be working with the.
I think that's the city's job.
That's our job.
Yeah, that's the.
So we'll try and rope in more and then tell you who they are and then you would add those to.
I can tell you one thing we've considered that, that would, so first of all, I fully agree with, with what you said about the fact that the city is responsible for, for however, at whatever level you choose to encourage or enforce participation in the hotel motel tax by everybody. We can use, and that, and I, that's probably more of a, of a stick approach. The carrot approach is that the website and the ads are going to land and you're going to have to show some types of properties there. So if, so if the, if the social media ad is, you know, come spend a weekend in beautiful, authentic Martindale, right? And somebody clicks on that, that means they're interested in a place to stay. You would show places of people who have contributed into the fund so that, so that their places would, would be represented. Now, there's a halo effect, there's an umbrella effect, that if Martindale becomes known as a destination, even people who don't pay in will benefit from this program. And there's not much we can do about that from this organization. But we can provide, do the best we can to provide lift and, and increase demand for the properties that are known to participate in the program.
So if you say you did this website, but they haven't paid their tax, you clicked on that site, would their site come up?
No, that, the idea would be more like, if some, if, if somebody clicks on an ad that encourages them to stay in Martindale, they would land on a page and that page would show a picture of the schoolhouse because creating one to get paid into the program.
Gotcha.
And, and, but it would say generals stay in Martindale, wonderful places to stay. But, but the specific example would be of one or multiple properties who are known to have paid into the program. And those are easy to swap out. So if somebody suddenly goes into default, well, then you can swap someone, somebody back in. And if you have a smaller amount of room, then there are people participating, you can easily rotate them in and out so that everybody gets a, gets some visibility.
Gotcha.
Well, I, I think really that the funds only go to those establishments that contribute to it. So you can't list all the Airbnbs that don't contribute.
Totally agree, totally agree, totally agree. There, I, I'm just saying that if we are successful establishing Martindale as a destination, people will go directly to the RBO, they'll go directly to Airbnb. There, they'll see the full list of everybody paying and not. There's nothing we can do to stop that. And that'll be a consequence of our success, you know, if that happens.
But it might be something that would encourage those.
Hundred percent.
Yes.
Hundred percent. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Big positive.
On the webpage, the landing pages would only be, represent people who are crazy.
Correct, okay, good.
But you know, like also with this, I think I, it's a lovely idea. I really do like it. But also, just like as you were saying, is there's going to be needed funds to be replenished and to continually be in there and to keep growing. Because Jared, how many Airbnbs do we have right now that are currently paying?
Not many.
Maybe five or six.
Five or six? So we have, I, I mean, and that's a, that's a lot of money that's generated from those five or six. But I think that's going to be time for the city to like, you know, if this is going to be launched, then we need to launch. You know, now's the time to get your Airbnb signed up because we do want money to be flowing into this.
I, I anticipate coming back to council soon on potential avenues to address that through ordinance changes and then also technology and process changes that within the city staff. I don't want to get too far off the agenda topic for tonight, but we're taking that very seriously and looking at that. And speaking with vendors like that might be able to assist us in that area.
Yeah, I was looking at the Fredericksburg website and they have almost a thousand, over a thousand Airbnbs in Fred Fredericksburg.
Wait, also, they have thousands of Airbnbs.
Wait, also, they have thousands of Airbnbs.
Twelve hundred, I, I think.
They just there.
Let's go ahead and finish her.
So the next slide, I think I've covered most of this, the way we work with with y'all is that you basically approve everything we do. We come to you with a plan, with a budget, you compare that to what's available in the city budget, you allocate monies to us. We go execute on that on a quarterly basis, we come back to you and we say, here's what we did, here's the plan, we did what was on the plan, we spent the money, here's what we did with the money. That we would, we would propose, if, if, if this is something the city council wants to go forward with, we would propose we go uh formally create the entity, get the merchants to, to join, produce the plan, produce the budget, get back on city council's uh schedule, show you the plan, show you the budget, get you to approve it, get you to allocate the money. That would be for whatever is remaining of twenty twenty-three when we come back to you. And then in the fourth quarter of this year, we could come back with a twenty twenty-four plan. Uh, so you would only be approving, A, the creation of this entity and in its support and whatever you choose to fund based upon our plan for twenty twenty-three. In the fourth quarter, we'll come back to you, you can evaluate how we've done with, with what you've given us. And then we'll have a plan and a budget for you for twenty twenty-four, we come back and provide quarterly reports. Next step, present a plan and budget to you, to the city management and to you all. Uh, we would agree on our, our board of, uh, our members and our board of directors, we finalize our structure and operations and we develop.
Okay, so really all we're doing today is doing a motion for you to create a resolution.
Yeah, I guess I'd. It'd be, it'd be really for the city staff to create a resolution and possibly if there's ordinance changes or other, whatever documentation that we would need to facilitate, you know, the creation. So it could look like a resolution of endorsement, yes, please do it. It could be a resolution of recognition that it was created, whatever.
It's going to be like another committee, like a.
No, this, this, this is going to be, the, the, this, this organization is going to operate one hundred percent independently of the city, except for its annual budget submissions and quarterly reports.
And when they have to come in to get approval for the amount that they want to carry out their plan?
They come up with the plan.
We would either say yes or no, correct?
Exactly, or amended.
Yeah, likely amended, I don't see, I don't see anybody saying no. Um, if, if this thing proves to be successful, which I imagine.
Yeah, so we're, we're outside the city, we are independent. However, we are dependent upon you for approval of our plan and approval of our budget. So you have, you fund us, but you have complete oversight into the plan and how much money is spent and where.
And we do our budget about June or July of the prior fiscal, the fiscal year prior. So we come up with our budget by, by July?
Yeah, in, initial drafts begin um internally in, in May and June and by, and the June, typically the mayor's um endorsed it. And then it's supposed to city council and public hearings and, and full bore into that budget planning setting process. So um, the budget often gets adopted in September. Um, likely, their budget, their annual plan would be informed by the city's budget. Um, and I'm sure there'll be opportunities for conversation on, on what that looks like. Probably what would happen is, right now, the city, just to facilitate compliance more than anything, separates its funding between different authorized uses of the hotel tax. Likely what we do in the future is set out amount for hotel tax restricted in a general way. Um, and then the annual plan would have the specifics on the allocations between advertisement, marketing and events and what, not events, art programs, um, and those things, so. I, we probably won't have a plan from them until we have a budget for twenty-four and then we'll probably look to have a budget for twenty-four, maybe at that point we have a budget for mayor, calendar year twenty-three. We'll work all that out with, with the organization, once they've developed, once they create their, their operating um documents and things and how they set up their fiscal years and planning schedules. We'll mesh in some way with ours, it could be annually, it could be one hundred percent fiscal year, we'll, we'll see how it goes.
But basically tonight, you're right, we're just voting on. So I want to make a motion to go ahead and direct city staff to draft a resolution recognizing and supporting the creation of Visit Martindale.
I second that motion.
Okay, and then um, just. Okay, so I have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Oh, do you have some discussion, I'm sorry.
I, I worry about some unintended consequences, because I feel like the people that, that the Airbnbs that are contributing are the ones that need to, you know, be on the decision making. You know, you're going to get a good solid plan going, but in the future, are there, are we able to get at least one Airbnb owner to be on the committee or to participate or?
Well, I'm, I'm, we'll be a principal one in the town and so, and I'll be, I'll be a board member. And I know Craig Foster wants to, and I think he's probably the second or third.
And they're going to come back to us with their.
I, I, I know, I just so worry about it.
So even, even in the event, in, in the event that not all equities are represented within the board, that's membership itself, because, so there's seventeen um bed and breakfast operators within the city, the board's probably not going to have seventeen members, right?
But three is.
Three.
Yeah, three, so.
There was more than.
Um, so.
No, 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 just on the board, the board of directors for the nonprofit would have three.
Oh, that's all?
Well, that's what's proposed.
That's the board.
And I think that's a good number.
Large could be, could be anyone, any.
Okay.
It'll be good things, it'll be the Texaco, it'll be Taco Feliz, I mean, it'll be the Red Barn. I mean, we'll, we'll try to get every one of the merchants to join.
Be almost like a, a, a Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, a business alliance, yeah, it's that kind of an organization.
Yeah.
So, but we don't have any oomph unless we can.
Get started.
The hotel tax really lets us be able to do something of power from our day.
Right, any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And then we've already discussed three point two, right? Well, let me go ahead and read it, motion to direct city staff to draft an ordinance to designate the city of Martindale's hotel motel tax to Visit Martindale Merchant Association. So this is a little different in that this is saying that we're going to designate all of that money to them.
I'm, I'm just going to say, I don't think we're ready for that.
So we'll.
I have a motion that we tabled.
Second. Okay.
That's three point three.
And y'all still got me for three point four. Okay, so I'm going to talk to you about.
We got to finish that first.
This is a motion and Sonia was the second. Okay. All in favor of tabling three point three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, so then we'll go to three point four. Explore Martindale mini soccer field supported by Austin FC and US Soccer Foundation. And we were talking outside and I was real excited about this.
I am too, I, I think this is, could be a really green asset for our community. We, we don't have a lot of, um, we've got the basketball court, we don't have a lot of places for kids to play, we don't have a lot of places for adults to get out and, and be active. I think this would be a wonderful amenity for the city. Um, but, but this is an opportunity, right? So I'm just presenting this as an opportunity that has come through me to the city and so I wanted to explain it to you. Um, so a mini pitch is, uh, it's a mini softball, uh, a mini soccer field. It's built on a hard surface. Um, the playing area is surrounded by rebounding boards, you can see them all the way around. So it plays a little bit like indoor soccer um in, in that regard, in that it's always action. The ball's never out of bounds, the ball is, the ball is always in play. Um, so it's a, it's a really exciting, uh, exciting game. The goals are, are integrated into the facility itself, so people can't walk off with them or steal them, the nets can't be cut down and, and taken away. Um, it includes a lighting system. So in evenings and even at night, I mean, the city can obviously regulate the hours that people are allowed to play there and the hours that the lights are on, or even if they are on. But it comes with lights integrated so that um in, in dusk and darkness, people can play. Uh, and there are lockers built into these things, so they're actually storage areas for kids to be able to, to put their stuff away while they're, while they're playing.
Where, where are you going to, where do you want to put this?
Well, one thing we thought about, I mean, the city would have to, if, if we were to approve it and everything, but one thing we had kind of just thrown out there was maybe the green space over by Hobson Ranch. We've never, and it would kind of bring that part of the city, because we do everything downtown. And if we had something that was, that, there's a lot more parking over there.
Well, also the floodway, the flood issue.
Yeah, and we do eventually maybe want to use this area down here, the triangle area for more parking, if we can figure out a way to make it safe.
That sounds great if you don't want to put that.
I mean, if it.
Totally agree. And, and um, today I just wanted to present the opportunity and, and facilitate a conversation. Uh, I don't have a specific location in mind. Y'all know the community and, and areas that could be available for something like this better than I do.
That would be a great spot.
So they're available in multiple sizes, so depending upon the area that we would want to put them, um, we have an opportunity to pick what size we want for this, which is, which is nice. Um, every place they've been, they're, they're all across the country right now, mini pitches, there, there are hundreds across the country right now. Um, ninety-eight percent of the communities that have them say that they're more active, ninety-eight percent say that they feel safer, ninety-three percent said that they, they feel tighter, this is a tighter knit sense of, of community there. Um, the people we would be working with, as the agenda item said, is Austin FC, the professional soccer team in Austin. They have a, a foundation called Four ATX um that does philanthropic and charitable operations in central Texas. They partner with the US Soccer Foundation, the Soccer Foundation is the one that has the national program and works with local entities to find homes for these. Um, so Four ATX is nonprofit, but it's affiliated with the club. The Soccer Foundation um is committed to building a thousand mini pitches across the United States by twenty twenty-six. So it's a big, it's a big program. If it's approved by a community and, you know, there's a location that's designated for it, AT, Four ATX and the US Soccer Foundation install the mini pitch at no cost. And a mini pitch is over a hundred thousand dollars to build. So, so it, it would be no out of the pocket expense to the, to the city other than the land and, I don't know, there might be some other expenses that might, maybe parking, you all would have to think about.
Parking's a big one.
Would have to think about that, but there might be some drag along expenses, but the mini pitch itself doesn't cost the city anything if we're approved to, to have one.
Kind of surface.
They're a hard surface, it's either asphalt or concrete.
Um, I've been, it looks like it could be a tennis court, a basketball, a volleyball.
Hundred percent.
So it can be converted into soccer, volleyball, basketball, badminton, pickleball.
Yeah, 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 I think that's exactly right.
She said pickleball.
Um, there are twenty, there are twenty mini pitches in the state of Texas. Um, in central Texas, there are four in Austin, there's one in Taylor and there's one in Bastrop. So, but none of them, the closest one to us is South Austin. So you have to get all the way to San Antonio before you find another facility like this. So it would be really nice to have something, you know, kind of special and unique about, about Martindale and having one of these. Um, I've had a Zoom call with both of these organizations with, with Four ATX and the, and the US Soccer Foundation. Um, I pitched Martindale saying, I think we're exactly the type of community you're looking for. They look for um lower income communities that have a need for um amenities and assets like this, that don't have a large tax base to be able to pay for them. Since they're a charitable foundation and stuff, they're looking to put these in places where people who are generally underserved can take advantage of them. So they were um very positive. In, in, in fact, I don't know that we would be able to move this quickly, but there was a discussion that they've got three left to install this calendar year.
Really?
And one of them has fallen through and they would consider Martindale along with two other cities. If, if we were ready, they would consider Martindale. Now, I don't know that we can move that fast, I'm not asking us to move that quickly. I'm simply saying that, that their level of interest is, is sincere, that, that in considering Martindale. And they said, if Martindale didn't succeed this year, that they have budget in plan for twenty twenty-four and that they, I, I think they use the word absolutely, if they're listening over Zoom, they may want to qualify that a little bit, but they led me to believe that, that the chances were very, very high that in twenty twenty-four, we could, we could get one, because that would be a new budgeting year for them with a, with a new number of, of mini pitches.
Yeah.
Nice.
So the questions, questions, yeah, that I've got is, um, you know, sort of like a indication from city council, thumbs up, some thumbs down, is this something we want to explore, do we want to do it? Um, if yes, then, you know, I think as quickly as we can, start considering some locations or a location that we would propose and that would be part of our response back to them. Yes, we want it, here's the location that we would, we would like to have it in. Um, we would want to select the size that we want. There's eighty by forty-five, ninety by forty-five, or fifty-five, or a hundred and ten by fifty-five, a hundred and ten by sixty-five. So once we, if yes, if location, then I think we decide the footprint we want to have. Um, and then the last thing is a mini pitch requires concrete or an asphalt surface. Um, ideally, for them, the location has one. If it, I'm assuming that the one we would select does not. I would be willing to fund and or raise the money to put, put the hard surface down to, at the approval of city council for its service and its surface and its type, approved by Four ATX and the Soccer Foundation, so that then Four ATX and the US Soccer Foundation could come in and install the mini pitch.
You realize soccer fields can't be funded by the motel, hotel pay.
Thought about that, but, but, but honestly, my, my first thought would be to um go to some people that I've worked with in my past who've been fortunate in their careers and, and see if I couldn't raise the money. I, I think I've got some places to go that, that I might have some luck with. With this story about building a resource in a community like ours, um, with Four ATX and the US Soccer Foundation, I think, I think I wouldn't end up writing the whole check, I think there's a good chance that I could get some support from people.
Are you stuck with just some?
This program, okay, so the other thing I haven't mentioned is, um, when, when you get, when you get, well, this, this, this came because Jeff and I were originally trying to put um soccer goals in Allen Bigs.
Yeah.
And then ATX has a soccer goal program. So I networked into a guy who's on the board of Four ATX. I'm looking for soccer goals, he said, we got mini pitches.
But a mini pitch.
Mini pitch sounds fabulous.
Can be converted in.
But they, but, yeah, so they give us, when it's, it sure appears like it to me, I think we would want to speak with, with AT, Four ATX and the Soccer Foundation. What we are being offered at no cost to the city of Martindale is a mini pitch. Um, it isn't a multi-use facility out of the box, as I understand it. However, I don't know that their uh guidelines prohibit us from buying a pair of basketball goals that could be, that could be put in, you know, over the soccer goals. Maybe that's absolutely a thing that they do, it wouldn't surprise me, I just don't know. This, this is, this conversation, I would say, is solely for a mini pitch. If we can get a bonus and get it, get it multi-use, I think that's fabulous, but I, I just don't know the answer to that, right?
You'd probably have to give contribution through the Basketball Association, Dennis.
Maybe, or.
I mean.
You got my support.
Yeah, and I appreciate the work you've done.
I'll tell you. I think it's, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
That's like Mike trying to throw in the grants on.
Yeah.
Come on, Dan, calm down. No, I just want to.
Come on, Dan, calm down. No, I just want to say items like that. I, I know it could be for a future agenda item, but like if we could just get our city staff to look for land that, you know, it would be able to fit and take some measurements. And if it's doable at Butterfly Meadows, I would like to do it there as well. So I think it's something that we should move on, and I think it's a great opportunity. And if we can, I would like to do it.
I, I think the, there's, there's, as we look at spaces, there are a number of considerations. First is floodway issues. Second is, we want it to be easily accessible to children, youth, who would likely make the most use out of this. So having something that is like only accessible by driving isn't probably the best option.
Where else can we put it though?
But I don't quite understand what you mean, because there's a, there's a daycare right across the street. And there's kids in both of those neighborhoods.
I was thinking, you know, if there's, if there's vacant lots not being used, maybe the frontage of Skyview, where there's probably a greater density of, of the youth, or maybe other areas near 1979. Or maybe even in the, in the down, closer to downtown. I'm not ruling out Hobson Ranch. I was thinking, like, as we, as we look at alternative.
Well, we have gamut to choose from, because whenever we pull up on the appraisal district with the land that we have in Martindale, like, we just have to pick a lot that works. And so then if we can, then let's do it. You know, we have.
We've got fan and street.
We've got different ones to look at. Areas to choose from.
That's a plug, that's a plug.
As you can see here, it's, it's kind of a four-on-four game, maybe five-on-five for the larger ones. So you're not, you're not talking about, you know, like eight-on-eight, ten-on-ten. You're not talking about twenty people trying to play at the same time. You're.
Parking would be a big issue.
Well, I mean, I'm not discounting parking. I'm just saying that it's not, it's not, it's not huge, right? It's, it's, it's not a giant facility, so.
I'm totally flexible where it put it. I'm not saying flood, we still want to.
So I actually got pinged by them last week, making sure that I was on the agenda for, for tonight. And, and, and promising that I would get at least an initial indication of interest back from the city. So am I, am I safe in saying that?
Well, if I could have a motion that if we want to go forward with this and then direct staff to maybe look at where we could put it, so we can come back with.
Okay, and make a motion to support and explore the Martindale mini soccer field and would like to direct city staff to look at the possibilities of land that we are able to use and donate to pursue this space.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Is there any way I could get something on City Letterhead that says what was just said here and approved by city council? And I can then forward that to 4ATX and the US Soccer Foundation, and I think that'll also show some real weight behind. It's better than me saying, do whatever we want.
Make it official.
Yeah, yeah, I think a resolution by the city, that Sonia said, I think that would really help.
Or even, even a mayoral proclamation that also addresses that the city council's motion and approval.
Here ye, yes.
Okay.
Ring the bell.
Ding ding.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
I just want to say one thing. Mari, I, I really think that this only space that we have available, based on the amount of acreage it might take for the soccer field and parking, I think, I really think Hobson Ranch is, is our only, only choice at this point.
Out of the flood.
Out of the flood, because you're, you're talking about a large hard surface. You're talking about electrical infrastructure.
And the, and the little walls.
And the wall. I really, and, and that's, I think we, is Hobson Ranch, what, three acres? Close to three acres.
Let's let the city come up with options and then we'll.
Thinking now that I may even go out there and measure it or try and give you a measurement of what Hobson Ranch is, because that's, that's about the only level, easy, accessible space that I can think of.
I think we'll get a report, right?
Why don't you help?
Thank you.
Jeff, did you have a comment? Since you live in that neighborhood?
Yeah. You're talking about on the west end of the park, right, not the lake, which is where everything slumps down over there.
Not the lake.
On the west side of it though, it pretty much levels out. Is that possible?
Well, where the biggest field is, yes.
You can't put it on top of the water.
No, it could be on the left, the west side of the lake.
Anything else, you look, it's old shape and everything falls down to the ground.
So we can discuss that.
You could put it on miles, but you can't put it on.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And Sonia made the motion, so I know she's in. Okay, so that carries.
Carries.
Okay, our, our three-point-five is a motion to approve seven thousand dollars from the hotel tax advertising fund to support the Own Your Own Universe event.
And.
And so Terry, Terry Hendricks is here.
Did you have a chance to, were you able to print out what I sent in or? Or is it in your book? Oh, there it is. Great. Now, there's also a sheet that is green. If you want to scroll all the way down. I don't think we have.
Yeah, we have.
There. So, and there's also, like, there's this one sheet. I'm kind of anal about figures. That. I think it's important when you get money, that's a grant, that you're accountable for what you, what you received, and then you have receipts. So what is in green is 2023. What's in black is 2022. So those are fees that were paid. What's in black is what was paid last year. So my grant was for eighty, eight thousand, six hundred. And so just to brief everybody, what Tammy Fest is, is, my sister passed in 2018. Own Your Universe started in 2012 and based on the premise of making art accessible to people that would normally not be exposed to the arts. So basically making accessible events for people that have disabilities and also making low-cost events where people aren't alienated because of the ticket price. And also creating, we have online workshops and we have in-person workshops. So Tammy Fest, we have a ticketed event on Friday. And then Saturday is a free event. So last year, what's really great is we had the money from y'all. We spent that money, but we were able to net six thousand, seven hundred. And we have been using that money. We turned right around and, and spent four thousand at Martindale Schoolhouse to host two back-to-back retreats, which were, were everybody that came to that retreat, there was thirty-two people total. And people that came to that retreat were all from out of town. And they stayed at the schoolhouse and they stayed in Airbnbs. I added up receipts and we're at somewhere a little around twenty grand for what the OIOU has invested in Martindale. And the parameter around Martindale. So we're hiring local teachers. We hire local art teachers. We, we shop at good, good things. We shop at, we bring groups to the cafe when it's open again now. And we're, we, and we, we have used the money that we had right back into the city. Right back here and we invested it. So what, this right here tells you everything that we spent money on. You know, so you see, I want y'all to see where your money went. Last year was a big success, so I estimate that we had three hundred. That's a conservative number. It might have been more like three to four throughout the weekend. And I have data. We had, we did advertising with Facebook, YouTube, but we had Instagram. And so we did really, I included in the packet that I sent to everybody. We had good press with the Lockhart Register. But this year, we're going to take out ads. I feel like because we had so much press for free this year, we should, we should do ads and support the local papers. What I love about this year is that we're going to have duets. We'll be on Friday. We'll be on, no Friday, it's the ticketed event at Carlton's place again. And that, and we really, the OIOU really needs to have a fundraiser. So the event on Friday is our fundraiser. And I'm going to play that this year so that we can cut costs, because I'm free. So that's, so Friday is ticketed, twenty-five advance and then thirty to show. But I want Martindale Cafe to do the catering. That way, last year, the cafe didn't make much money because we hired catering that was local. Well, not local, it was scheme. So, but I feel like for, for Tammy Fest needs to be an inclusive event. There were all the businesses proper. I really don't want the OIOU Own Your Universe. It's not just supposed to be me, you know, on 1979. It's supposed to be a community event. So I'd like, I put in our budget proposal for this year for Martindale Cafe to have catering. And I estimated, to help us, so we're, we're looking at a hundred and fifty people over there at Carlton's building. A seated concert.
Which building?
Carlton's, the one we used last year. Wherever I'm kind of, this way, I'm on.
It's not across the street.
No, um, yeah.
Down street.
Yes, I know which one.
A little small building. That will be the ticketed event inside. That's Friday.
Not one of the ones down, down?
Uh, yeah.
Over here, the, the one over here.
Right.
Next to the light.
Which is Friday. That's Friday's event. But Saturday, Saturday, I'm really excited about this. It would be working with duets and then bringing Texas Commission on the Arts, and that's going to be totally free too. So I'm excited about this. It'd be called the Bloody, Bloody Marys and the Bloody Music Business. And it would be teaching entrepreneurship of artists. And the people that I want, that I want booked for that would be local people that like, I'd like to hire local artists. But I also want to hire, there's a girl named Wendy Colonna. It'd be a hundred and fifty bucks, but she's a great marketing person that knows how to, how to really use reels and social media for games. So it'd be, and then give BMI involved, which is Broadcast Music Incorporated, that, 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 get them there to help with that event and possibly help sponsor that stage at duets. That would be from eleven to two. And then last year, I really didn't like the vendors setting up at dusk and being an afterthought. For this to really be community. Saturday, I want it to start earlier. So I want, I want it to where, where by the time we're done at two, the vendors are set up. That means the music has to start earlier, which means we have a bigger budget, because we have to block off the streets and pay the police to be there a little longer. And, but Saturday, I just feel like, hey, if a vendor wants to hang out all day until ten, great, but maybe we could have, there'll be kids activities early on in the afternoon to make it to where, like, I want to have rock painting. We have a lot of supplies left over from when we had to shut down during COVID. A lot of paint that could, that, that if we don't use it, we lose it. So we already stocked up with a lot of stuff that we need to, like, so basically, we could have kids painting kindness rocks, you know, that that's a great, and it's not going to cost any money, because we've already had the supplies.
Right.
So that's what I.
We'll listen to the Saturday.
And so that, so again, it's a little, it's a little confusing, you guys, because what's in black is what we spent money.
Last year.
And what's in green, I also really want to get an ADA compliant, like porta potty. I want to, I estimated five hundred, but in full disclosure, I didn't call yet. I just thought, found it. I thought, well, that's great. I think if we have one person in a wheelchair that uses that toilet, then I'll be a happy woman. Because I just get really tired of people that have physical disabilities. They, they have a hard time getting to the bathroom. So I, I think it's worth it. If I have to personally play a set on Saturday to have the money for whatever that costs, I'll, I'll do it. You know, so I want to get an ADA compliant porta potty and then, and so that's, I hope this is making sense. But basically, this is Tammy Fest again for this year. But I'd like to build on it and make it more inclusive with local businesses and make it more of a real community effort. And I still want the OIOU, though, to profit so that we can then use the money on the way we have this past year. You know, we turned right around, it took whatever we netted and put it right back in local, and I want to do the same thing this year. So, so that's, that's what it is. That's what, and I, I added up everything, the projected expenses were, I kind of shot high. But we can, we can cut costs on, by having the, the final act. I, I wonder if ten is too late. If, if we ended it at nine, he could start earlier, which we could cut off five fifty by having one less band. I think it, I, you know, there's a way, the wiggle room here. So I estimate, like, I, I think I could make it work if I got, if I did get a grant for seven thousand, which would be, last year we got eighty-six. I think, I think we could do it for seven this year. And, and make that work. Make it work if I'm smarter with what we do with the lineup. How, that said, I, I don't want artists to play for free. Musicians need to be paid a fair wage. I'm adamant about that.
Henry Visal last, last, the last time was really good.
And you know, and he was, and, and here's what else, how, this is, last year, he has paid a thousand. He showed up on time. He was fantastic. He brought a crowd. So this year, it's twelve fifty. He also just got to Austin, a huge award in Austin, like the number one. He's getting harder to book. And so to book him out, we're, we're actually getting him a discount. You know, so to book him out and, and get him confirmed on that weekend, and there's a no-compete clause, which would mean that, you know, if we're paying him a guarantee, we can't have him play at Samarkis for free. You know, you know what I mean? Then what happens is his draw might see him that weekend and skip our weekend. You know? So I also changed weekends to the last weekend of September, because we skipped Mermaid Fest and also were before Austin City Linux Festival, which I kind of put it up against last year. As, as far as heads in beds, I, I mean, I, I have an estimate of, of who the people that, yeah, it is, it's two nights. That said, a lot of the people that are coming, that came last year are Wimberlys, Samarkis, Austin. So how, how many people are staying overnight? I can't really gauge that. I do know that, that I'm on 1979. I want to be part of the visit Martindale. I want to be an active part of that. I cannot, I'm really tired of, of having events and not, and people not knowing where to stay, not knowing. I get asked all the time. So I started to have events. At, you know, by, I have big events at, where I'm at now in 1979. We're going to have a bird release. We'll probably have a hundred people out there, you know? So if I have that bird release on a Sunday, and then if I have two events, maybe mosaics in the morning and guitar in the afternoon, it would be great for a family to make a weekend out of it, where they stay, you know? So that's, that, and so I think the visit Martindale aspect of this is going to be really helpful for someone like me.
Right.
I want to pay, I want the property at front of me is getting renovated, to be able to have a place where people can, can pitch a tent and stay. And so, but back to Tammy Fest, I don't, I don't want to get off track here, but but I'm excited about this. And I, I love the growth that we had from the first year we did it was 2019. And that was around a hundred and fifty, to, to, you know, this one to me was three hundred to maybe three fifty. I have a good team that helps with it. So I'm excited about this year's event. Are there questions? I felt like last year was a real success. This year, I would like to see, I, I would frankly like to see more diversity. Like, I'd like to see more kids and I'd like to have more kids' activities. And I'd like to see more community engagement. That's if I had a goal for this year. And I have to say, with or without funding, we're, we're going to do it, you know? I believe in it.
I had a question then. So when is the river appreciation? Um, I had a question then. So when is the River Appreciation? Is that in August?
August nineteen and twenty.
So we funded that, but that was out of the budget that we set aside for this fiscal year. And since this is something that would be after September first, that would be for the next fiscal year?
September thirtieth is the cutoff date. Um, and it, and typically in accrual, in our accounting systems, is a contract or agreement is struck before the end of the fiscal year. And work has begun on that contract prior to the end of fiscal year. It can continue to carry over beyond the September thirtieth. All that to say, we don't have to worry. This will all be funded within the FY twenty-three budget.
Fiscal year.
The same fiscal year.
So, yeah, the one, the one we okayed yesterday is the one you were talking about. I mean, last meeting. Was on your, the River Appreciation. And, uh, what's the date of this one? There's.
September thirtieth.
September twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Oh, okay. It's two days.
Didn't we have an art budget? Didn't we fund it from the art budget last time?
So our, our budget laid out, eight thousand dollars for art programming, seven thousand dollars, I'll, I'll pull it up. Seven thousand dollars for, um, actually, it's in our.
This is all, this is from the restricted hotel tax, right?
Um, yes.
Restricted fund, okay.
The one that's in special revenue. There you go.
Um, here we go. Advertising, we had set aside seven thousand art programs, art, performing arts programs, eight thousand signage, three thousand. City Council can change that as you wish. Um, so we've already basically spent the art programming budget. Doesn't mean we, we don't have money in hotel tax that we keep, no. We have ten thousand dollars in, in the hotel tax that we could potentially spend. We just want to reallocate it from advertising to art programs.
And then we'll start to work on, this would be the last, not the last, but one of our other major expenditures. And then what's left then, we'll start to work with Visit Martindale with the monies, so their monies.
There's, there's two, there's, there's money in the bank and there's the annual budget. So, um, annual budget is basically done on balance. What you take in that year, you spend that year. Um, the hotel taxes, we had some accounting to catch up on, but we haven't taken in as much as we spent to date. So it was in the, based on this, so we've only, through March, only received four thousand dollars. Last month, we spent, we contracted for eight thousand. That's basically spent as far as accounting goes. So we're, we're in the red. However, Wayne did say earlier that he's got some checks to, to clear, um, to get our revenue square.
We've got forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
We got to budget it.
But, yeah, we, forty thousand is, is what's in the bank account, but our annual budget was only eighteen thousand. We can, we can dip into the savings account.
Of the restricted.
Of the, of the restricted fund if you, if you want, but that's not, that'd be outside the, the budget.
Well, it's so close to the next fiscal year.
Well, it's only May, the beginning of May. Our next fiscal year doesn't start in October.
My, 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 my.
About six months.
Yeah.
Summer is when we make the most money in the hotel, when we fund it. So we haven't hit summer yet.
I mean.
I don't, I don't suspect so.
Yeah.
Um, and if we, if we do run a, a deficit, it would just go against that savings, yeah.
At some point.
I'd like to really, um, start on it immediately and kind of beat some of these other big festivals to the, that's why I'm here. Uh, because, uh, last year was really hard. There's Korean Music Wine Music Festival, uh, there's Austin City Limits Festival, Mermaid Festival. I'd like this, I'd like to get on the cover of Community Impact, you know? I mean, like, like, by, by, with this lead time and with our press team, we could, I'd like to, I'd like us to shoot for the moon. But it's also going to take, putting some of those, it could possibly make the advertising budget bigger. If the advertising budget gets bigger, then like I said, that I take that Saturday show and maybe make the sets a little longer. And maybe cut one of the bands, but make the sets a little longer and make the pay work that way. You know, so I can make that parameter work. That's what I'm saying.
With the set.
Yeah, I, I believe with, I, I really, I put down eleven thousand, two hundred. That was like, if we, if it's like shooting for the moon, that's what we need. But if it's seven thousand, I think I can also make that seven thousand work too. I know I can, you know? So there's, there's seven thousand to eleven thousand and there's that wiggle room right in the middle, you know? Uh, I could make it work.
Sounded like last year was pretty successful.
It was, it was really nice.
We got eight thousand plus dollars from the city.
It was eight thousand, six hundred. And then we spent every penny of that. And then we also were able to net sixty, I, I put it down, sixty-seven hundred. And we turned that money and turned right around and spent it on the schoolhouse and on local and on our program, you know? And that was the goal, so that we're not always.
And then from what you said, I mean, you, this year, you're going to, you know, it go in conjunction with duet. You're going to use them for catering.
Um, well, I'd like duet, duets would be the venue for Saturday day.
Uh-huh.
And then, uh, I'd like Martindale Cafe to do the catering. Uh, that, that way, um, that way it's local and helping them build. And, and also having them in part, it's like, it's, this is the thing in my head, I keep thinking, go local initiative. It's like, like, go local, you know? Here we are, local. Let's build each other up as a team. You know, there's a rippling effect of energy by just supporting local and then building it up.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the seven thousand from the hotel tax advertising fund to support the Own Your Own Universe event.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Sam was louder. Okay, is there any more discussion?
Do we want, I mean, is seven thousand where we want to be?
See, that was the one thing I was going to say.
That's the motion.
It could always be amended.
I, I mean, are we stuck with seven thousand?
We have eighty-six last year.
There is a triathlon that comes every year too, is that I'd like to support later in the year.
Are we going to have, uh, the bicycle race this, this year? Or do you know?
No, Mama, Mama Jama is gone.
Mama, Mama Jama.
They're gone.
Yeah.
They have been gone for several years.
Oh, so there's nothing else on, on the horizon that you have?
Triathlons always here every year.
Okay.
I mean, but it could always be amended.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, what are you saying? Do you want to amend that motion?
It makes sense to match at least what we did last year.
I mean, if you can live with the seven thousand, are you sure?
You know, if we had.
Are you begging for more?
Uh, well, I guess. I know, I mean, it's that. I'm going to tell you, this is how I feel about it. I feel like just because we can, doesn't mean we should. We, we made money last year.
Right.
If there is, if there, I, I feel like, um, it would be great to have more, yes. But I don't want to be a hog and you use all the funds. Somebody else might have something really cool that could support it. So, uh, so we were able to make, make money last year. I, so I would say, let's take seven thousand and let's see if I can make it work. And then next year, if I come here and like, oh my God, what did I do to myself? You know, because I have a tendency to do that.
Yeah.
You know, then next year I'll come in here and I'll be like, I really shot myself in the foot.
And see, well, then like, next year it'll be going before our, you know.
Board.
Yes, our board that we are making and whether it's in their budget.
And that was another question I was going to ask, but I didn't know if it was appropriate that, that funnels through the, uh, the Visit Martindale board, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I can make it, I can make it work.
Yeah.
If, if, if that's, and then that way, uh, we're not, like, somebody else might come here with a great idea that might just, and if, if Tammy Fest takes the rest of the money, then that doesn't help anybody.
Right.
I'm okay with buying.
I can make something that doesn't work.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
I really appreciate it.
I appreciate your trust. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I carry.
We trust you.
All right, so we'll take a ten-minute break and then we'll, we will, uh, go into executive session. And, uh, I am asking Matthew, the governor, to stay for the executive session. Okay, go ahead and make a motion to table future.
Are, are we on green?
I make a motion to table future items. And I would like to make a motion to.
Someone has to talk about.
You have to tell us that.
It is in green now.
That nothing was resolved.
And we're going to have to be. None, one, there's nothing to report.
Nothing to report from the executive session.
That's it.
There's nothing to report.
First, I make a.
Exactly.
In the session. I make, can I make a motion in the meeting?
Yes.
So during the meeting at ten oh two.
I'll second.
Ooh.